The videos may be on. We are on live now. All have joined. No sir. Sir, we are live now, we are live now in Facebook and YouTube. President Sir, our Vice Chancellor of our Makkahut Honorable Professor Soikat Mahitra Sir arrived, joined.
Okay. What will Professor Surappa Sir?
I am giving call him but still now he is not lifting, maybe he will join, so should we start and in between he can join.
He is not responding?
No, he is not responding so far. So we can start.
I will also call him. Let me try once.
Okay. Yes sir, he is joining sir.
He is trying to join.
Join, join, okay sir. So, shall we start sir?
Yes, yes, yeah.
Okay, good afternoon, respected dignitaries. So, we are going to start the concluding session of online summer internship program organized by Indian Institute of Chemical Engineers, I I C H E headquarters. So I welcome to all in this program, today's program. So I request President Sir to chair this session and give your brief presidential address and then proceed for today's function. Thank you sir.
Thank you Dr. Avijit, Professor M K Surappa, Honorable Vice Chancellor of Anna University, Professor Soikat Mahitra, Honorable Vice Chancellor of Maulana Abdul Kalam Aajad University of Technology, West Bengal, Shri Praveen Roy, Director, Kalyan Bharati Trust and former Managing Director of B C P L, and immediate past president, Professor S V Sachinari Na, Sri Praveen Sachinari, Vice President of I I C H E, Professor Avni Rao, Vice President of I I C H E, Dr. Avijit Ghosh, Hamjari Secretary of I I C H E and also the Colonel of Online Summer Intensive Program, Professor Balso Gremannan and other I I C H E office members, I I C H E council members, I I C H E members and program coordinators, subject experts, excellencies, district delegates and dear students. Ladies and gentlemen, at the outset, I am very happy, the first two batches of online summer internship conducted by I I C H E are going to end by today. So it is my pleasure and privilege to welcome you all to this concluding session of first two batches of online summer intensive program. There are twelve different programs which you have conducted online for the particularly student, I I C H E student members in petroleum refinery engineering, chemical process technology, process safety and management, petroleum engineering, Six Sigma and bio process engineering and zero liquid discharge management and biochemical and biomedical engineering and refinery retrochemical engineering. So there are number of students who have registered for this program and around sixty subject experts participated and coordinated by seventeen program coordinators, the program went on very well. And a report will be given the secretary after some time and some of the special chief guests today joined with us are honorable Vice Chancellor and then let me introduce the I I C H E. I I C H E Indian Institute of Chemical Engineers is a chemical engineering professional society started in eighteenth May nineteen forty-seven with thirty members, little fund and nominal infrastructure in a room of Jallapur University. But now after seventy-three years, remembering the founder president, Dr. Richard Roy, the great visionary and pioneer of chemical engineering education in India, I I C H E has got its own building and also the increased to thirty thousand and forty-one regional centers across the India and one sixty-six student chapters are there. So these are conducting the professional activities, keeping in mind the object to suffer promoting the chemical engineering education and research consultancy by the subject experts. Institute regularly organize meetings, conferences, certificates courses and arrange workshops, faculty development programs and counsel the students in their professional careers and also guides for the research projects and industrial consultancy and initiates the other activities which are very useful to the society and also professional development which are having a chemical engineering relevance. I I C H E organizers annual event which is called Chemical Engineering Conference shortly called as CON usually in the month of December and which will have various memorial lectures and chemical distinguished speeches and also awards prizes will be given the meritorious students and the area of the chemical engineering field and S Chemcon also will be conducted during the September month. So this is very brief about the I I C H E. So this year due to the pandemic situation prevailing in the country, we, our students are facing very difficult time and they have completely unrest and also worry about continuing their education. However, I I C H E has converted the challenge into the opportunity and started online summer intensive program. This online summer intensive program started on twenty-third May twenty-twenty with the inaugural function and which was started by Professor Padmasri G D Yadav and then it went on about nine batches and we got very much, very overwhelming response from the students and the lectures also got very good feedback. The program attracted the students' attention from all over India and many students gave the very good feedback. Now two batches have finished by today. Another batch is going on and mostly we are conducting many more batches and the subject experts program coordinators have taken lot of pain and being encountered with many technical problems and the problems in arranging lectures, they have done very good work and I appreciate the support and interest shown by the all subject experts and program coordinators. All the students have actively participated, they have been evaluated also. I congratulate all the students who have completed the courses with a very good grade. So with these few words, I invite Dr. Avijit Ghosh to do brief report on online summer intensive program on twenty-twenty. Dr. Avijit, please start.
Thank you sir. So I just would like to inform that we have taken this initiative to help the student during this lockdown situation so that student undergraduate third year student can pursue their on summer intensive as a part of mandatory curricula. So after getting the circular from the I I C T, we thought myself and president discussed that it would be a great opportunity for us also to serve the student. So then we have started circulation, we got overall response from the country from the many institute like N I T, I I T, almost more than one fifty institute university participated in this program. Around two thousand student have registered for this past period of session, we had to separate in three batches, twelve sessions and nine subjects. Almost seventy-five experts from across the country from different industry. Mostly we are arranging the expert from the industry as it is part of industry training. So the faculty members from the industry only we have selected few from the renouns from the academics like N I T, I I T, they have delivered their real industrial application and the sub syllabus has been designed in such a way a student will get certain the industry exposure. Now almost all the subject has been completed for the first and second batch, third batch is going on, it will be completed by June thirty. So in this first and second batch around fifteen hundred eighty students, eighty-two students have completed their other program. Out of that thirty industry has participated, so thirty industry catered their expert with the, to help the I I C H E for the student. So this is the short about our intensive program, we are planning to make it to the formal application to the I I C T if they can acknowledge our program, so it can be in a year two times we can do. And moreover, some of the industries are coming forward to collaborate with the I I C H E to float the certain industrial training program like related to the software related program Aspen Prost to simulator I C's. So there we are in touch with that, so near very future soon we will be floating this type of training program. So now President Sir, you can please proceed with our, the today's program. Sir, your mic is muted. President Sir.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, to start today's lectures by special guests, I request our immediate past president, Professor S V Sachinari Na to introduce Honorable Vice Chancellor of Anna University, Professor M K Surappa. Professor S V Sachinari Na, please introduce him.
Sir, good afternoon to all of you. Professor S V Satara Na, Professor M K Diddy, J N T U Jharkhand Technical University, Chanthu Rana. Presently, I am holding the post of Director, Director of Academic study and before going, I thank Professor Surappagaru, Vice Chancellor of Anna University, Professor Saikar Mitra, Vice Chancellor of West Bengal Technical University, the President of Indian Institute of Chemical Engineers, Professor B B Basaragaru, Vice President, Province Sakseena Garu, Andre's Secretary Abjit Ghosh, Controller of Examination, Professor Basprammanum. My dear student friends, good afternoon. And it's a great pleasure for me to introduce Professor Surappa, the Vice Chancellor of Anna University. Professor Surappagaru born in Karnataka, in a Mysur, in a Mysur, Meral Village in Mysur District in nineteen fifty-one and he completed his school education in Kannada medium. He obtained BSc degree from Yowaraj College of Mysur University. He joined Indian Institute of Science Bangalore in nineteen seventy and completed the B E degree in metallurgy, M S degree and PhD degree in also from Bangalore. So after completion of his PhD or before completing the PhD, after submitting the PhD, Professor Surappagaru joined in regional laboratory trivandrum as a senior scientist, then moved to USA for carrying out research as a researcher associate at Drexel University, Cavendish Laboratory University of Cambridge and Swiss Federal Institute of Technology Switzerland. He returned to the India and joined as assistant professor at very famous institution, Indian Institute of Sciences Bangalore in nineteen eighty-seven and rose to the position of professor in nineteen ninety-eight. And he was, he served as the Andre Secretary of Karnataka State Council for Science and Technology during two thousand four, two thousand nine. He was a visiting professor to Sir Moxagoram Isesraya University Mysur and he was served as a founder director of I I T Roper between two thousand nine to two thousand fifteen. He backed I I C Bangalore and he served as the Dean of Faculty of Engineering during two thousand sixteen and two thousand seventeen. Today, he is the professor of, I mean he is the Vice Chancellor of Anna University and he is also honorary professor at Indian Institute of Sciences. The main areas of interest of Professor Surappa, it is a metal matrix component and many of the students may understand the importance of the metal matrix and I too have done a lot of work on the mixed matrix membranes. Of course, it's not a metal matrix but it's the mixed matrix membranes and Professor Surappa is having more than hundred publications in international journals and he is having hundred fifty papers in national and international conferences. He is also authored a book and he has secured, has secured one US and three Indian patents. And Professor Surappagaru nurtured I I T Roper as an institution of excellence in research and governance in two thousand six. Institute and governance and in two thousand six, national ranking of institution. I I T Roper got a number nine position among the top hundred engineering institutions in the country. And it is very hard to hear that the contributions of the Professor Surappagaru for the growth of the I I T Roper in a short span of spine, it has become one of the top institutions of the country. Professor Surappagaru is bestowed with the M, Sri M Isesraya Award for the lifetime contributions in science and technology from the government of Karnataka for the year two thousand fifteen. Professor Surappa is a fellow of Indian National Academy, Indian National Science Academy and Indian National Academy of Engineering in the year two thousand fifteen. And Karnataka State Open University honored him by awarding him under his degree of Doctor of Literate. He received Stuvana Karnataka Rajastha Award by the government of Karnataka in two thousand six and Professor Rustum Choksi Award for excellence in research and engineering from I I T, from I I C in two thousand seventeen and two thousand seven. He received the Amulya Award for Innovation in two thousand twelve by the government of Karnataka. He has, he has been bestowed with the Metalurgical, Metalistics Year of the Award for the year two thousand nineteen ninety-eight by the government of India. He is the recipient of the M R S I Medal for the year nineteen ninety-seven from Materials Research Society of India. So with this brief introduction, I request the, it is a great honor we have Professor Surappagaru among us in today's evening meeting and sir, we will be very, our students benefited by learning to you. So I request Professor Basara to take our next proceeding, thank you all.
So thank you, thank you for introducing a great personality and we are very lucky to have Professor Surappagaru here and I invite Professor Surappa to address our students, sir.
Good afternoon to everybody. Professor Basavarao, President of the Indian Institute of Chemical Engineers, then the, the other dignitaries, Professor Mahitra and we have Dr. Ghosh and my colleague Professor Balasubramaniam, I see him there, I did not know that he is a controller of examinations. I did not know that until now, I saw it sir, when I, one of the guests introduced him as a controller of examinations. Because I deal with so many controllers here in my university, I did not know you also have a controller. Very interesting thing for me. Controller examination is a very difficult job, I noticed that one, you know, constantly there being questioned, you know, getting lot of issues with them. Because you know, I did all my studies at the Indian Institute of Science, we did not have any controller of examinations there. You know, the faculty himself is a controller of examination. He teaches, he press the paper, he pass, evaluates, he is all his job. But you know, on the university system, I'm seeing first time now this, because, because my, my, this is my first foray into the state university system in fifty years. Okay, so I'm learning all the, the data, all the intricacies of the state university system and compare that one with the central funded institutions and I I do a lot of thinking on how, what is the, issues with this universities, why universities are not moving up, what problems breaks them. You know, I have a lot of insights now, so I can share with one in another platform, okay, very interestingly. My, my practical experience, dealing with the people, dealing with the bureaucracy, dealing with politicians, you know, so many things I can share. Okay, anyhow, that is not by the, today is, today is, I think the students are being given this internship by the various industries in the chemical engineering and also need to talk about a good thing that is remote, what you call these, this year internship, online internship. I think it's a very good thing to happen and to the students, especially in the chemical engineering sector. Where in engineering, if you see engineering education, whether it's a chemical, mechanical, electrical. We all have gone through a very significant changes, going through it. At a time when you are seized with this, how to improve the technical education, enhance the quality and make them more confident, more them more, make them more practical, make them more creative, you know, when it was happening at that time and you know, even you know, all that want to happen through a classroom teaching. So when you were discussing or making all attempts to improve that system, suddenly in the last four years because the massive number of students are sparing for engineering education, including the chemical engineering. We got into what you call these digital learning processes, e-learning, mobile learning, you know, all this, all this, you know, distance learning. All learning which is not in the classroom came into picture, how do you deliver this work? How do you cater to the needs when the faculty shortage is there? How do you compensate that one, how do you bring it? So you were seized with that problem of using that as an alternative section, alternative media or in argumenting that one in addition to the classroom teaching. Now this COVID nineteen has changed the whole situation now, you know, there are no classroom teaching now and the last thing and we don't know how, how long, nobody is certain about it, whether the COVID will go away next month or next six months or certainly it will last stay on and I'm sure about it, one or something will emerge. I think it will wipe out, it's only a question of a time which we don't know. So until that point of a time, I think we need to depend on this, what you call this, this e-learning, digital learning processes and thing and all. So I'm glad that especially with, I want to talk about few minutes about the chemical engineering and which has both laboratory component and theory component, simulation and all these things are there happening in the chemical engineering sector which India as a whole is a large, very powerful, apart from this software, software engineering, computer education, chemical engineering is one of our stronghold and we explore lots of things and it's a, catered to the different sectors of industries. It could be a chemical, making some chemicals, pharmaceutical drugs, okay, industrial chemicals, okay, so under, I have, of industrial, we through chemical engineering, you do plastics, materials, so it's hundreds of things that happens through a chemical engineering approaches, okay? And directly plastics to reply, so many things are happening. And that itself is a big area with which we, out of advances are happening and the country now is the right time when this we used to depend on how much of import from the China, so the COVID nineteen has put us at a great challenge. You know, how do you do that one when the COVID, whether China itself stop the exports or India itself blocks the export? I don't know, I think both things are happening and China have been controlling. So we need to improve this, our chemical industry's competitiveness and where you find out alternate materials, how do you do? Make a better chemicals, better materials, better drugs, cook things and all. So all these things is a big challenge to the chemical engineering fraternity community, okay? And this needs very talented students and with very creative thinking and do new experiments, new simulations and, and new computations and it's a big challenge to the, all the educationalist policymakers and the other, other. So in the process of providing or argumenting this, this learning processes for the students, I am glad this many professional bodies like Institute of Chemical Engineers have joined. I see this one managing, many other professional societies are also joining in their respective fields. I think it's a good, a contradictory institution of chemical engineers, I having taken this road of providing this, what you call the online internship to the students so that in this period of, especially this vacation imposed by this COVID nineteen, students make use, best make use of this period and learn as much as possible, especially with the participation of the various chemical industries which your chapter has undertaken, I think it's a very noteworthy thing to happen. I wish to compliment and congratulate this institution for doing this kind of an excellent job. Now coming to this education, you know, this, the core engineering education in general and the chemical engineering education and more specifically, how, how we can now, this, what can be done, what is the current status, what is the situation now, okay? So certainly the digital learning process is going to come in a very big way, whether COVID nineteen disappears next year or five years. I think the future of universities is going to be very digital and whoever succeeds in bringing the digital infrastructures for learning processes, for teaching, for evaluation, for practical training, for internship and whoever has got that abilities in both the infrastructure where these teachers, existing university teachers able to hook on to this kind of platforms and still, and teach in a way which has to be done slightly different compared to the classroom teaching. How you know, that itself is a challenge, because our faculty members are not used to that, you know, they come to the classrooms, maybe they use the P P Ts and things like that, but in the digital learning process where the students are not seen in front of you, of course you can only see their photographs but you don't see them physically and you know, in a big classroom, so how do you empower? So how do you impart, how do you ensure the students do learn whatever teach? And in order to do that, it must be more interesting to them, especially because. And unlike a classroom where they come in, they cannot easily get out. But in the case of this kind of digital learning, we don't know whether they are sitting in the room and learning. Or you know, they are not there, it's very difficult. And it's possible they will not be, they will continue to sit there if we teach that, this learning process is more interesting. And definitely, okay, and it's a guest group to it, any other distraction, so that is important. So you need to bring in, how do you do interesting, this, that is such a challenge. And the pedagogy of this kind of digital learning is going to be changing. And this is a big challenge to the faculty members. And see that the learning process through the digital process, this learning, e-learning and online learning. And you have to find out the different mechanisms and different way of giving examples. So all this needs to be built in and this is a challenge. And next is they try this laboratory classes. So we know that engineering education will not be there, just not a computers. Okay, it's except the computer, perhaps all other classes has got and again, practical component or the laboratory component. Which they have to, students have to undergo, especially in branches like hardcore engineering, like chemical, metallurgy, mechanical, electrical and all these things. So those build experiments which are in the syllabus which is already there. How do you translate those experiments into the, what you call the workshop laboratories and that itself is also a big challenge. So that needs to be built in and for which I think country is not prepared for that kind of things. And suddenly it is being imposed and we need to do a much more lot of routines. And which for this, I think lot of industries cooperations, industrial experts. And you know, for us very much will be greatly helpful to that one. Then in the evaluation process, we have seen that one in the country now this year, there's a lot of who and cry. Universities cancelling examinations and they're, they're rating the students' final year examinations, being, being. Done in a different ways, taking the averages of the three years, or best of the three years, you know. And so much of confusion is going on, okay, there's not really arrived at connecting, how to handle this situation? Can we, can we go without conducting the examination? Is it fair enough to give a degree to assess the students? So you know, this is all the questions you know, I myself is facing as a vice chancellor. Because I know after this work, all the vice chancellors are not ready to conduct the examination. I'm the only one who wants to conduct examination, so I'm going through it. If you can see, I'm gonna say this has been a big challenge for me. Because I, I feel that has to be conducted because, okay, for two or couple of reasons, one is. You know, an engineering graduate, after four years, he goes out to the college. I think he has to be evaluated properly, we cannot just like them giving a degree. We already have given many institutions have yet, already we know what is the problem with it. You know, when you have engineering degrees, they are not getting a jobs, they are only about thirty percent, forty percent employed. Their capability to deal with industries, get on to the thing, skills, their implied fundamental knowledge they have got is not adequate enough. And if you do that, that's the reason why I feel that examination, whatever the mode that you conduct. Whether even if you conduct one hour, is you able to capture the students abilities, what they have learnt in the forty-four years? Okay, in a one hour, that is a challenge, sir, it's a kind of an examination question papers. Has to be set in, if you have to conduct an online examinations very prudently, honestly. Whether without giving rise to any kind of a, other practices and all these things. So this is an important thing in my opinion. In addition to that, I think you know, we are saying, you know, countries. This, the universities in the future is going to be the digital universities. Everything, much of the thing, apart from what you call the blended learning and all, you know, we'll have the blended learning. You know, even if the COVID goes away, the digital learning is becoming a part of the life for all of us. And where in which we improve the, enhance the digital learning processes to the student. And bring it and blend with the regular coaching and make them more creative engineers, outstanding engineers. To solve the problems of the society and apply where the engineers who pass out, able to relate what they have learned in the classrooms. All the fundamentals and relate that one to the practical problems, current realities, issues of society is facing. How do you divide the problems that people face every day, challenges into the engineering principles? And make the students to come and to understand and apply very carefully what they have learned into the practical issues. So that itself is a, also a problem, you know, issue to the, our, our faculty members and our digital learning systems. So this is a very huge problem and being known with this knowledge. If it is essential that you must prepare now, this is a unique opportunity to build our system. Our digital learning processes, okay, where, you know, now the country has, no doubt has built a very good. B two B or consumer to consumer, booking the airline ticket, pay time, P T M. And all these things, it's going very smoothly, they have built a very good system. But you have not been able to do that one, you have seen some of our speaker now, just as a vice president was able to. For giving a talk, you are not able to see his speech of completely. So then you don't have that kind of resilience and robust infrastructure, digital infrastructure still. And when this happens at a large scale in the country everywhere, you have seen the kind of banners that are being held, what you are not able to see. So we need to build that system and including the limited testing of the examination system. And it is essential, we have to build the, in order to ensure that kind of a system is goes well in the years to come. And we need to get on to the system here at this stage itself. Okay, it means this, you have to use this situation as a test bed. To send, conduct over on the examination for the engineering students, you know, you, even with a diluted system. So that you know, when it happens in a full, all the classes, you know, even the final year students, you are struggling all to conduct. Leave alone the first year, second year and third year, where you are going through the other system, there is a time for them. But you have to need to maybe ensure the students get out of the classrooms, get out of their, their engineering colleges. And get on to the certificates and whatever the jobs they have got from the companies or higher studies, so they are accepted. So we need to ensure that things happen very quickly and so that hence I felt that it's a relationship then. So this is the whole the system, we need to train our teachers to use this digital system. And ensure this level of learning process and goes to the much higher level. Because in the digital process and examination and all, you know, they go on, they can, you know, they have access to the books. So that it is not a typical question papers that we are used to set in the early days of our system. Where you go to the handbook, the class textbooks, take the chapter, question pair questions in the chapter, end of the chapters. And give the same questions to this repeatedly, change the numbers and we change the textbooks, it is not like that. Because the student would have still learnt these things, when they are writing the examination, they have access to these books, some of these open books. So you must ensure their creativity comes in the best forum in the engineering things and we need to develop all these things. So I think, I think I've taken a sufficient time, I think there are others to speak about it. I wish that we, this, this function of this. Giving the certificates to these students who have gone through this kind of a, remove this internship in the chemical industries. And it's going a long way and I will compliment this Institute of Chemical Engineers. I thank you very much, I wish you all the best and good luck. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, sir, for delivering a lecture. This concluding session. Sir has spoken on the digital teaching, its necessity. And also the evaluation methods which we can do on the digital modes. And I think students have received all these things and your lecture has filled the students a confidence. And also the COVID pandemic situation continues. They have faith on the university systems, they will take care of that. With this lecture, I thank you very much, sir, in spite of your busy schedule. You have joined us and spent this evening, thank you very much, sir. How is it? Now I call upon. Now I call upon Sri Ravind Shaksina, Vice President. Who introduce Sri Prabhas Roy, Director, Kalyan Bharati Trust and former Managing Director of B C P L. Ravind Shaksina, sir, please introduce.
Yes, I, I, I'm audible?
Yeah, yes, yes.
Okay, as usual, it's a good afternoon. But I say that from on behalf of all the students, it's a good morning, we are energetic, okay? All the dignitaries on the dais. It's really full of dignities we have with us. Already that Vice Chancellor of Anna University. Vice Chancellor of Bengal Technical University. The great Prabir Roy Sir. Our President, Sri Basav Rao, I A C H E President. The past President, Professor Satinaran. There are few others who are also present. I welcome also Mister M V Rao, Vice President, I A C H E. Then Avijit, the secretary and the main coordinator of this. Online Students Internship Program two zero, two zero. Mister M K Jha, Bala and other council members. And all the students of Internship Program two zero, two zero. Prabir Roy is a, itself is an icon, doesn't need to be introduced. But in a program, there is a practice that you introduce your, the great personality. So really, I am fortunate to introduce him with you all. Mr. Sri Prabir Roy is presently Director, Kalyan Bharati Trust. As a, his background, I think that tremendous background academic. His master's degree in chemistry from Jhaddapur University. And bachelor's degree in chemical engineering from London University. And the best combination is M B A from Leeds University, U K. So basic science, then engineering and then followed by M B A. I think that nothing is left to organize the industry. He was also the recipient of Commonwealth Scholarship, which is really a pride for everyone. And served the former sheriff of Kolkata. So really, it's again feather in his cap. And the former president of prestigious Kolkata Club Limited. Okay, as a, his a professional career, Sri Prabir Roy also served as a Managing Director of Bengal Chemicals and Pharmaceuticals Limited. And he was recognized as the best Managing Director of Public Sector Undertakings. Really, it's a great challenge. In the public sector to handle the enterprise, the unit as a managing director. He was, received many honors during his professional career so far. And best award, he got it. S C O P, Scop, Meritorious Award of Excellence in two zero, two thousand. By the present, at that time, Prime Minister, Sri Atal Bihari Vajpeji. The contribution in public sector undertaking. So really, it's a marvelous achievement by Sri Prabir Roy Sir. Throughout his career, he has been on board of various public and private sector companies. And independent observer in G R A C for six to ten years. Within Vikram Solar, Mister Roy would be providing his strategic guidance as an independent director. The best I can conclude with, Prabir Roy. In a line that he is a man who can prove that. Or new students to hand, those who are coming into the fraternity of chemical engineering. The best message by Prabir Roy is. Yet the energy of youth cannot be stopped. If you are really religious, what's your cause? Nobody can stop you. So with these wishes, I am fortunate and proudly introduce all you to Prabir Roy. Thank you. Prabir Roy, please take over.
Thank you, sir, for your kind word. Dignitaries on the dais. I'm definitely not going to speak on education when two vice chancellors are present. Vice Chancellor of Macau and Vice Chancellor of Alain who is present here. So I will definitely, I would like to talk from industry point of view. I feel in spite of all difficulties, COVID nineteen is an huge opportunity. For new generation engineers. What should have happened five years down the line? That has now climbing forward by five years because of this virus. Five to ten years down the line, people from one city will work in any other country. From India, you can sit here in India, work as an engineer in USA or in Europe digitally. You don't need to travel, you don't need to go to the places. I can see my son who lives in New York and he runs a company which is about forty billion dollar company. It is huge company, he has managed director. And he has not gone out of his house for last three and a half months or four months. He can manage everything digitally from his home. So world is climbing to a stage that everything will be handled digitally. I think this opportunity is now you are getting to learn knowledge digitally. And to apply knowledge digitally. So I feel it is a huge challenge for our students. A huge challenge for our faculty, because how do you train them? I remember, I still remember that on the final day, when we are passing out from our London University Engineering. Our head, Doctor Mullaland told us. In spite of all your good degree and background and all your knowledge. You cannot, you don't think that you are better than all operators who are working in the plant. For thirty years, because they have got huge knowledge, which will. Make them more competent than you to handle a particular, to handle a particular problem. So please learn from them before you actually, actually apply your knowledge to improve. On technology, which I did in my first job, I remember I learned from the operators, I learned from the supervisors. And I then designed how to improve those filtration process or rectification process and all these things. And I could get a lot of actually reward from the company and I, I felt happy that I could double up something. Better in terms of efficiency, but that knowledge initially I could learn from them. And I don't know how our teachers will preach that knowledge digitally, that's a very tough job. But otherwise, I feel it's a huge challenge for our teachers and I feel it is a huge opportunity because our students. When, because now engineering job is getting limited and limited, because computer is taking over a lot of jobs. So it is a huge opportunity because now we can, sitting here, you can work anywhere in the world. That opportunity, if we have to utilize, will have to be really more digitally knowledgeable. I am sure Babasa Shaukat is there and he will be the best person to enlighten us how that will be done. And I am sure our, it is a huge opportunity and our student will rise to the official. And take this opportunity and stay in India and work globally. I wish this seminar all the best, I congratulate the Institute of Chemical Engineers for inviting me. And although I am part of the Institute of Chemical Engineers, I am a live member, I am a fellow. And I feel very happy to be part of your program, sir. Thank you and wish you all the.
Thank you, sir. Actually, Prabir Roy, he is having very good industrial experience. And all the more, he is running a one educational. And all the more, he is running a one educational institute. So that source is service towards the country.
And I'm still with Babra Industry, I'm still on the board of many chemical and pharmaceutical industry.
Yes, sir. And also you are serving a lot for the academics, that's a good thing, sir. I, actually, we met you during that, uh, in the month of Puthravali, when we came there. You have offered a very good hostess. So we never forget that, sir.
No, you'd like to, we'd like to again host your impound we had once and we wish we can have it again.
Yeah, thank you very much and, uh, in spite of your busy schedule, you are with us, uh, that's a great thing. So we, uh, I I C H never forgets that. Thank you very much for joining us and sharing your ideas during this pandemic situation and how the digital teaching will help us. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, sir.
So now, uh, Professor Saikat Maitra, Honorable Vice Chancellor of Maulana Abdul, Kalam Ajat, University of Technology, uh, West Bengal, the Saris with us and Professor, let us hear him, Professor Maitra did his graduation and post-graduation from the University of Kolkata. And Professor Maitra served as a professor and head of the Department of Environment College of Engineering and Ceramic Technology Kolkata. He has more than thirty years of, uh, experience in teaching, research and administration. He has published more than hundred peer review, journal, technical articles and guided many PhD and master degrees. All the more, he is having very, uh, very much love and affection towards the I I C H E. And achievements, his achievements include patents for scoring powder composition and a process thereof researching utilization of the fly ash in relation to its interaction with the line. So that's a great thing, sir. And member of, he is the member of Indian Institute of Ceramic. And he served as a treasurer for that particular professional body in two thousand four. And the Indian Ceramic Society is a life member and life member of whole as Association of India. And he is also life member of our own institute, Indian Institute of Chemical Engineers. And is also life member of Material Research Society of India. Uh, he is going to deliver the keynote address for the students on the eve of concluding session of R C first and second batches. So I invite Professor Saikat Maitra, sir, to speak uh, to deliver the keynote address on this, uh, the concluding session of all this second batch. I invite Professor Saikat Maitra to speak. Sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Uh, all these dignitaries present over here, uh, at the virtual platform. Professor Surappa, then I can see Praveer Roy is there, we are very much connected. And then Professor Shatana Rayana and then Professor Prasanna Badota, Professor Praveen, Professor Balasubramanian, all other distinguished council members of Indian Institute of Chemical Engineers and office leaders. And of course, my dear students. Uh, COVID nineteen definitely impacted the way of our life, of our all practices across the entire world. But I would like to say, uh, from a different angle. Professor Surappa nicely pointed out the importance of digital education and pedagogy uh, in this context. But if you look at this industrial transition, industry were actually migrated, were started to, were starting to migrate from industry three point zero to four point zero from two thousand ten onwards in a massive scale. And that's why the requirement of the industry in terms of skill, uh, that was, uh, in many cases are not matching with the output from academic institute. And that was a concern for all of us, those who were associated with engineering education across the country. We were quite alarmed as seeing the downfall of the, uh, of this interest among the students for engineering education over the last few years. Basically, if you look at this industrial scenario, this industry four point zero, this is, uh, uh, this is dominated by the features like automation, analytics and remote work process. And that's why many important skill uh, that was required to be, get embedded with our engineering educations in different domains. This is number one. Number two is, uh, this is the time for looking at problems. Not from a particular discipline, but from a multi-disciplinary approach. You see, for all disciplines, it has happened. We have to look the problems from different perspective and different angles. Different approaches to take, take care of problems that was, that was emerging and like design thinking. Like a agile method for solving problems, like looking at the problems that, uh, to solve it, maybe in the biological life. So many things, very interesting things, uh, that started developing in the, of the lot, of the, of the late, uh, in the, in the last few years. And here what happened is COVID nineteen, that has accelerated one thing, that has accelerated our change in mindset with, with this changed perspective. In a, you know, this more intense way. You see this, um, subjects like or disciplines like or skill like data science or machine learning, artificial intelligence. These are very much required for each and every engineering disciplines and for chemical engineering, of course, this is very important skill requirement. Machine learning, artificial intelligence, data science, that needs to be embedded or needs to be integrated with our engineer, all engineering curriculum. And if you look at all these things, then this is the right time to upgrade or upskill our engineering graduates, engineering students and future engineering professionals in field of chemical engineering, chemical process industries in this, uh, skill in such a manner, in a formidable manner, so that they can take care of all the different problems like automation, analytics and remote work process in a significant way. And after industry four point zero, the prediction is that it is going to be transformed to industry five point zero where more personalization or customization of product will happen and more machine, uh, human intervention will take place. Personalization in drugs, in automobiles, in each and every sector, any commodities, that is going, that, that is going to happen. That means more applications of, you know, this design thinking, more applications of, uh, innovative ideas, creative ideas that is required. Uh, apart from, you know, this traditional knowledge, traditional skill requirement, the requirement of this emerging skill in emerging areas like machine learning, artificial intelligence, data science and data analytics. And at the same time, nurturing the creative and innovative mindset, this is the call of the day. This is the requirement of time for our budding engineers because entire country, uh, the mayor is looking for exploiting the greatest strength of demographic dividend. We are going to have this for maximum number of people within the age group of twenty nine. And that is the best advantage for us because at this time, we in between, uh, is eighteen to twenty nine, this in between this life period. The creative mindset or imaginative mindset of human being is maximum active. Therefore, this is the time to exploit this potential for each and every, uh, you know, this, this graduates or young students in the best possible way. Next, another thing is, as there have been a lot of changes in the, uh, in the geopolitical scenario, as Professor Surappa pointed out, we need to focus on development of self-reliance. And in India, the self-reliance can be developed in this chemical, biochemical process in industries to a significant extent because India is always blessed with this, uh, natural biodiversity. And we have never, uh, tried to encourage our young minds to, uh, to, uh, explore these natural resources for translating them to economic proposition for the benefit of the society and the community. But the time has come up. Now you see, there are lots of, you know, in pharmaceutical sectors, in natural products and all these areas, there are immense potential is waiting for us. Now how best this, this can be taken care of, how in the form of micro-knowledge-based entrepreneurship, creative thinking, that, that is, that, that is, that is to be seen and that there lies the challenge for all academic programs, for all training programs now, this should be the, uh, you know, this, uh, benchmark or this should be the, uh, signature for translating the failure or translating the non-performance to success, that we have to inculcate this source of, uh, skill training and mindset in the most formidable way, in the most positive manner among these young students. Now, uh, opportunity is enormous. Earlier, we never thought of uh, taking, uh, these MIT classes or Stanford classes without visiting US and other parts of the world. Now this, all this, uh, professional platforms or different, you know, this, uh, online platforms, they are providing classes from MIT, Stanford, Harvard and all these lectures in the best possible way and in the most interesting way and interactive, these are interesting, interactive and then, and that, that is, that is one of the greatest opportunity for us to integrate all these resources with our existing traditional uh, practices of academic cultures and all these things in this, in this country. Government of India was trying hard with the introductions of Siam and P T L and all these platforms. Virtual, Professor Surappa mentioned, lots of investment government did on virtual platform, by virtual application. But still the take care of all these programs were not that, not that much because of, there was no compulsion on it. Now we can have the opportunity of integrating all this best quality educations and courses provided by different online platforms like MIT Open Course, like Course Sarah, like EdX Online, all these things like, uh, our N P T L, our Siam and all, there are many, many class centers and many platforms are available like that. And many are offering, uh, to the Indian students this facility at a very affordable manner. So this is one thing and this institution, society, now they can have a major, uh, you know, this contribution in this area because as this society, they have, as this institute, they have a large number of resource persons available with them. So they can be, uh, utilized properly in making content, in making knowledge content, digital content for the benefit because they can always, this our, this, uh, wise persons at our, you know, this, uh, all these institutes available with us, they can always contribute uh, for the upgradation of, uh, the, the conception and understanding of the students, sharing their knowledge, sharing their experiences, experiences, sharing the case studies and many things. So this is one of the advantages. How to capture all these things digitally? And digitally capture means that can have a maximum, you know, this, uh, breadth or maximum, you know, this accessibility. So if it can be hosted at internet, at web portal, that can be accessed by students at from different parts of the country. So this is, this is going to be one of the biggest advantage. If we seriously try to capture the knowledge, expertise and wisdom of all the personalities associated with us. And we do not have any doctor talents and that's, and that is, that is one of my, uh, imagination or expectation that one day in near future, we will be able to develop our own content, our own engineering content. N P T L is doing that thing, but there are lots of things to do. We can develop in such a way that each and every students from different corners of the country get benefit from the knowledge resources, from the pool of knowledge resources of all these societies. This is one thing, I I C H has done a commendable job in organizing this online internship program, I I C T. I had personally lots of interaction with I I C T, uh, because of this introductions of this, uh, online systems. Online, you know, this, uh, integration of online educations with traditional educations, then in, then introductions of this online inspections, then introductions of this online internships and all these things. And already it has come up, this internship at this present time, online internship in different, uh, you know, this, uh, required area like, uh, computational skills, like, you know, this different simulation skills, mathematical skill. Always that can be done, that can be done in an online manner. Engaging resource persons in a remote way with our students. Second is capturing different, you know, uh, these practical things in a digital mode and and providing this, all these digital resources to the students and assessing their level of understanding by moderating, by coordinating all these things. That is also very good options and that is always possible. We have, we can have, uh, you know, this enough repository like this and that can be used for upgradation and betterment of each and every student. Already you have taken that initiation and my congratulation to I I C H for taking up this job. I believe that it will be, uh, more intense in near future for the benefit of more numbers of students. And at the same time, uh, my suggestion is besides this, uh, in this, the internship programs and all these things, let us develop some digital content, some online content, learning content. And for different level, for different levels means this is the time for learning, unlearning and relearning. People who are working at industry, they need to relearn. They need to unlearn themselves from their old apps, obsolete knowledges and they need to relearn in new things. So for those people who are working at industry, because right now getting job is problem and retaining job is another problem. So many people are, they are becoming jobless at different industry, that engineering professions at different levels. And that's why we need to impart new skills and we need to re-skill. The two things are there. So for this purpose, if we can design a tailor-made programs for different sectors in a more customized way, because customization is the key now. And integrating all these new, uh, skill requirements and entrepreneurial, you know, this, all these opportunities, all these entrepreneurial areas where entrepreneurship or enterprising skill can be developed. So if all these things can be developed and there are certain things, other, certain other things to make it more, you know, this formidable for entrepreneurship, we need to integrate with, uh, financial, you know, this, uh, uh, this propositions or financial, uh, management, all this, so that the people after having certain level of knowledge, if they want to transfer the knowledge in an economic manner, from where they will get the fund and how they will market all these things. So understanding of digital market, understanding of, you know, this financial part, getting, you know, micro, you know, this concept of this microfinance, all these things, this can be integrated with this, yeah, engineering sectors, particularly chemical engineering, because chemical engineering has a lot of potential for development of a large number of micro entrepreneurs, knowledge, knowledgeable entrepreneurs in different novel products, different customized products in near future. So with this, I wish you all the best. My sincerest thanks to I I C H for giving me a chance to express my opinions and my, uh, best wishes to all the young students, young engineering, chemical engineering students. And I, I, I believe that in future, bright career is waiting for them. They need to only upgrade themselves with new skills and new mindset. Thank you all.
President, sir, please unmute your mic.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, uh, thank you, Professor Saikat Maitra, sir, for delivering the keynote address and stating the industry four point zero, uh, it's operating, uh, remotely. And that will really help us and, uh, uh, also artificial intelligence, machine learning. These are the present, uh, day of the skills which have to be updated to the students. Uh, actually, uh, in I I C H E is now preparing the, uh, online lecture material because we found that the elders, those who have retired already, they have a very good skills, manual skills. So those skills are not there at the present day, uh, chemical engineers. good skills, manual skills. So, those skills are not there at the present day, uh, chemical engineers. So, what I I C H is trying to do is, uh, we are getting dropped it, those skills by the, uh, the experts who have already retired and we are trying to digitalize and keeping on the website of I I C H so that they can be useful to the uh, students of I I C H, student members. So, that is the activity which you are doing, sir. They, they may not be alternate to the NPL and all, but however, they give the certain, uh, information and also, uh, update the skills of the present chemical engineering students in the very old techniques which are not being practiced at present. So, your lecture will help definitely to us, sir. And I thank you for sparing your valuable time with our students and also with the I I C H council members and I I C H members. That will be very much useful. And your contact will help us in coming days. Thank you very much, sir, for spending your valuable time. Yeah, how is it?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, you can take. You can take over and, uh.
Okay. So, thank you, sir. So, just now for the student and our delegates, just we'd like to formally release the certificate sample. So, which is, uh, basically, uh, we'd like to show to the student. So, uh, uh, that has been shared. One minute, sir, it is. Sir, due to some technical issue, certificate that has not been able to share, so I'll email to all of you. So, now I'll put the formal vote of thanks for today's program. So, first, uh, first I'd like to convey my sincere thanks to today's all the eminent speakers. So, Professor Shurappa ji, Professor Maitra sarji and our honorable director, Sri Prabir Rai ji for accepting our invitation and spend your time from your busy schedule and enlighten us and students. I think they are very much benefited from your inspired talk. And I I C H also thank, extend our gratitude for all of you. I'd like to extend my thanks to President, sir, for encouraging me continuously to doing this type of special session and concluding session. So, I, I'd like to convey my sincere thanks to President, sir, Vice President, sir, Professor Saxana ji, Professor M B Rao ji, Past President, sir, Professor Shatana Rana ji and Balasar. So, all the council member, treasurer, Joint Secretary, registers and most importantly, past presidents. So, we had started our, the special session from Professor G D Jadhav to then Panjwan Ishar, Professor Pide, Professor D P Mishra ji, Professor B K Rattar. So, all they have delivered their excellent lectures. So, I would like to convey our most gratitude to, towards all of them. So, hopefully, I I C H will continue this type of activity and will, will be keep in touch with all your, uh, guidance. And I expect from, uh, help from all of you. If you have any suggestion, you please pass to the I I C H headquarters. And near future, we are also trying to launch the certificate course for the practicing engineers. Those are, uh, the basically, the, uh, the diploma engineer who would like to get some skilled knowledge on the graduate level. So, as our A M I C H degree is not certified by the, uh, I I C T. So, that's why we are planning to host the certificate program which can be approved by the different technical institute, university and most importantly, I I C T can also extend their approval. So, with this sort of, I would like to, uh, conclude today's session. So, thank you very much once again for your spending valuable time. Thank you all.
Thank you. So, we must be thankful to the, uh, Dr. Avijit Post, who is doing very good work at headquarters. And the day and night is struggling and also solving the number of technical problems even though he is facing. And, uh, we must be very much thankful to him. Thank you, Anandall. Okay. Let us conclude.